Good evening. We've got a large crowd tonight. The Board likes to see a large crowd. That means you're participating in the process. I would like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Greer Planning Commission to order. Again, I want to thank you. I apologize for those of you in the back that are standing up. I asked why we couldn't open the wall up a little further, but there are no more chairs that were put out by the event staff earlier today, so all the chairs are full. So we do apologize. We weren't anticipating this larger crowd. We normally have about a dozen people at one of these meetings. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Cady for an announcement.
Hi. I'd just like to welcome Mr. Tremaine Booker to the Board. He is our newest Planning Commission member, taking over for Michael Wright. He is in real estate and a longtime Greer resident, and we are happy to have you onboard.
Welcome. Nobody else ever got clout. Okay, as always, folks, if there's anybody here on the Commission tonight that will need to recuse themselves of any of the matters that are before us, you'll need to fill out a recusal form and step down from the podium when that case comes. I don't know that that's going to affect any of us tonight. All right, I'd just like to say that. Okay, at this time, we will review the minutes from our June 19 meeting. I trust everybody's had a chance to look at those. Any deletions, additions, comments?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender? Oh, sorry. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right, moving on, we will now open the public hearing portion of the meeting. During this time of the public hearing, the staff will give the basic information of each of the requests that are before us tonight. Then the applicant will come up and tell us the basic information for the request that is before us. After that has happened, we will allow time for public comment. I will ask if anyone is here to speak for or against this particular piece of business that is before us. You will come here to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We are recording audio and video. You'll be able to go home and watch this probably later tomorrow, once it's put up on the city server, but we are live. So we have a large crowd tonight. Most of you are here for the same piece of business that's before us. So I will say that if you want to get a spokesperson to speak for the group, that's okay, or you can speak individually. You'll be limited to three minutes. Otherwise, we'll be here till this time tomorrow. So if your neighbor has said the same thing that you plan to say, we don't need to hear it twice, okay? So it saves time for everybody. We just don't want to regurgitate and repeat the same talking points. We want to keep the meeting moving very fluidly, and we want to be able to get out of here at a decent hour tonight, but we want to make sure that everybody's concerns are heard and questions get answered, okay? I will say this now, and I will say it again when we move on to the new business portion. We are not the final decision maker. We are here as an advisory board to City Council. So we will hear the pieces of business that are before us. Then we will make a recommendation based on what we hear from you folks, what staff tells us. We will make a recommendation, and then it will move on to City Council. And I believe most of this business that's before us tonight will be before City Council next week.
Yes, the rezoning and the annexation case will be first reading next Tuesday. The four final development plans, Planning Commission does have the final authority on those. But the case that the majority of you are here for is next Tuesday, first reading.
And they will meet, City Council meets here in this room at 6:00?
6:30 PM.
6:30 on Tuesday, 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month, and that will be next Tuesday, will be our 4th Tuesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, a little housekeeping. Restrooms are in the hallway behind us. You'll go out the door, you came in, walk around, if you've never been in here before. Restrooms are on the back hallway. Other than that, we will move ahead, and we will start the public hearing. Our first piece of business is Final Development Plan 2303. Ashley.
Heather. Before we get started, just a brief reminder to the Board. The Final Development Plan is similar to a preliminary plat. It's just for the DRD PRD developments, so the next four items that you hear will be similar. So this is Final Development Plan 2303. The address is Valentine Road. The parcel ID number for the record is 5-13-00-003.02. The existing zoning is DRD, Design Review District, and the request is Final Development Plan approval. Here's the site development plan with 88 townhome units. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the zoning of this property in November of 2021. That completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant here? You want to come up here and tell us anything?
Nothing more than, yeah, there's not really much to it, just 88 plots and 18 acres or so, yeah.
All right. All right, that'll come shortly. All right, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this piece that's before us tonight? Final Development Plan 2303. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for Final Development Plan 2303, and we will open the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-04.
This is FDP 2304. The address is 305 Tryon Street. The parcel ID number is 019000103100. The existing zoning is DRD, Design Review District, and the request is Final Development Plan approval. Here's the site development plan with 54 townhome units. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the zoning of this property in October 2022. That completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant here? Yes.
I don't have any.
If y'all have questions. All right, but nothing else to add right now? All right, that'll come shortly. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against Final Development Plan Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-04, and we will move on to Final Development Plan 23-05.
This is Final Development Plan 2305. The address is Laurela Street Extension. The parcel ID number is 9-03-14-299.00. The existing zoning is DRD, Design Review District. A request is Final Development Plan approval. Here's the site development plan with 78 townhome units and 13 buildings. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the zoning for this property in September 2022. That completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant here for this piece? Anything to add at this point? Thank you. Anyone in the audience here to speak for or against Final Development Plan 23-05? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-05 and open the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-07.
This is FDP 23-07. The address is 712 North Main Street. There are three parcel ID numbers. The first is G016000100700. The next one ends in 800, and the third one ends in 900. The existing zoning is DRD, Design Review District, and the request is Final Development Plan approval. Here's the site development plan with six townhome units. Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of this zoning of this property in November 2022. That completes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Applicant present? Got anything you want to add at this point? All right. Anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against Final Development Plan 23-07? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for Final Development Plan 23-07, and we will now open for Final Development Plan 23-06.
This is FDP 23-06. The address is 402 East Subur Road. The parcel ID number is 0528030101901. The existing zoning is DRD, Design Review District, and the request is a statement of intent, major change. The request is to amend the current statement of intent to include convenience store use to allow the sale of food, gas, and other goods. Here's a photo of existing conditions of the site, and here's the preliminary site plan. That completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant present?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brent Edgerton, Greer resident, also a business owner in Greer, and I'm here on behalf of the landowners.
Your address?
In terms of application. 433 Circle Drive, Greer.
All right, what do you want to tell us?
To keep this succinct, I'm going to read to you so that I don't ramble and save these people's time. So I like the opportunity to address what we think are maybe some misconceptions. So we've tried to talk to some of the public and, of course, staff leading up to this. It's been a long course of action, well over a year and over three years since the land's been owned by the current ownership group. First, I'd like to address the original statement of intent that was approved by the city while the land was under previous ownership. The existing and approved statement of intent contemplates up to 100,000 square feet of retail-related space under roof. This kind of square footage compared to the acreage size is typically associated with a grocery-anchored shopping center. To put that potential finished size into perspective, if the convenience store were to be approved and would be adjacent to the current childcare center, car wash, and future retail center that is planned, the total square footage would be approximately 28,000 square feet under roof. So as to foot, it's hard to understand the rationale that up to 100,000 square feet does not bring more traffic, light pollution, and critical mass of users as compared to 28,000 square feet, with 11,000 of those square feet being childcare and segregated by South Farms Drive from the rest of the parcels. It's also spread over four intended parcels, that square footage. It has been implied, if not actually said, by staff that an amendment of the statement of intent is necessary for a convenience store use since this use was not specifically listed as an approved use in the document. To give context to this, the reason that childcare and car wash were specifically listed was not an arbitrary coincidence. Rather, it is because, early in our negotiations to purchase the land, which took 16 months in total, the developer knew from us that childcare and car wash were in the works. The word et cetera was added appropriately to the end of that list of contemplated uses since et cetera is used when a potential list is not fully known or there is too much to list. This was not because other uses weren't possible. This is backed up by the fact that the restrictions and covenants of the adjacent residential neighborhood states that convenience store is essentially a pre-approved use. Not only do restrictions and covenants list convenience stores as an approved potential use for the convenience store parcels that are adjacent, but they were recorded with Greenville County in March of 2020. As a matter of standard process, this document would have been presented to residential buyers of the South Farms neighborhood prior to their purchase. Furthermore, it was publicly recorded and available for all to see. We fully support residents' rights to their own opinion. However, we do not comprehend that they did not know or should not have known this was a potential use. The process leading up to convenience store use being approved by the developer and residential HOA included the presentation of construction materials and lists for all potential end uses. This included the convenience store category, and the representative photos and renderings that were used for approval included a convenience store, including gas pumps. We would like staff and council to understand that the traffic that would patronize a C-store already exists. There would not be new traffic, but rather just more people that might spend their dollars in Greer. The property will be developed, and in conversation with staff and others leading to this meeting, it appears clear that just about all retail uses would be permitted on this corner, except for a convenience store. If this project is denied to achieve the same value, the owners will be forced to look at options that contemplate more users, which could be more concrete, more infrastructure, and as many, if not more, customers frequenting the site on a daily basis. We feel that a restriction against convenience store use is arbitrary and unreasonable devaluation of property value. We request your consideration for recommendation of approval of this request. The user has done their part to create a neighbor-friendly site plan. I would like to give the floor for just one minute to the representative of the user of that site plan. Furthermore, we are happy to address councils or anyone else's questions or concern if called upon later in the conversation. Thanks for your time. I would like to give it to Lake and Far for 60 seconds, who is representing the actual user, if that's possible.
We'll do that part during the new business portion.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. All right. I know before I ask this question what the answer is, but is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against Final Development Plan 2306? Let me have a show of hands. Okay, folks, I've got three pages here of folks that signed up. 24 so far. So the first name is Judy Farrell?
Jody.
Oh, Jody? I'm sorry, Jody. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Jody Farrell. I own 314 South Farms here in Greer. I don't need to say a whole lot. You know why we're here. We oppose this. Now, looking at all of you, you don't look to be homeless. I'm going to say that you do live in a home somewhere. Would you like a convenience store in your backyard? Well, guess what? We don't want one. There are many uses that property could be put to. A convenience store is not on the list. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Timothy.
General Cor.
General, yes. Thank you.
If it's not the first time, it won't be the last time. Just real quick, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to engage with my neighbors around this, this potential change. And, you know, I guess the one thing I would just start off with.
I'm sorry, if you'll please state your name and your address for the record.
Fair enough, yes. Timothy General Cor, address 108 General Store Way in Greer. So just from a need perspective, we have four gas station convenience stores within two miles of the proposed site. We have the, on 14, we have Spinks and Quick Trip. On Hammett Bridge, we have Spinks as well. Those are each less than two miles away, and then less than one mile away, we have the Hot Spot Convenience Store right up here. The other thing, you know, I would add, so the concern as a resident, been here about two years now, convenience store stats, in terms of just violent crime stats that come from FBI sites, state that convenience stores are the fourth most common location for violent crime to happen, almost 40,000 offenses annually across the country, accounts for about 7% of all violent crimes. Now, I'm not saying to somewhat with Mr. Edgerton's point that, you know, people who are here are here, fair enough, but to also counter one point that he made, stated that this was not listed or that we, that this could have been done before we were here. Well, the reality is, is that we are here now, and we do have a voice now. And again, I appreciate the willingness for y'all to hear our voice, and I think you'll find that there's a unified voice around, we don't want this to be the anchor point of the introduction to the rest of Greer, to our neighborhood. This is our homes, these are our families, these are places where we go to work, we work for those dollars to spend in Greer, we work for those dollars to relax in Greer, we don't work for those dollars to be robbed from a convenience store in the corner of Greer. That's about all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Tat Savina Rodriguez, 340, looks like 341 South Farms.
I skip my turn because I have a loss. Hi. Sorry, it's my second language. It's a little bit hard for me to explain my minutes, but.
If you will, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, okay. Tatiana Raskova, 341 South Farms Drive.
Thank you.
And the next person is my sister, so I will speak for both of us.
That's fine.
So I absolutely agree with my neighbors and previous speakers, and I want to add that I see a problem with traffic to the Woodland Elementary every day in the morning, and I think this will make much more problems with this situation as well, because I, I don't remember the name of street, so we have a lot of cars stuck in there every morning, and I don't think that this gas station will really make the situation better. That it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Matthew Christian.
Signed up on the wrong sheet.
Oh, you signed up on the wrong sheet, okay. All right, looks like we have George Capila? Could be, Culpepper, yes.
I can't get my glasses on, I'm getting older by the day. Bear with me for a second, please. Good evening, my name's George Culpepper. I live at 22 Corporal Drive in South Farms. I am a resident of South Farms, obviously, and the president of the South Farms Homeowners Association. I'm here representing the Board and the HOA. Our residents expect the association to protect their investment, especially the townhome owners who would have this gas station in their backyard, and this is the main reason why I'm here, to oppose it. South Korea, Germany, India, Belarus, Ghana, Egypt, Mexico, China, Colombia, Washington State, New Jersey, New York, Florida, Pennsylvania, Maine, Georgia, Michigan, Colorado, California, some places in South Carolina. These are just a few of the places the residents of South Farms have moved from. We are a diverse community, and we believe in keeping our community safe and free of unwanted traffic and crime without, within our subdivision. We are not NIMBYs, not in my backyard. We just believe in keeping what the promise made. They promised a development at this lot, still promoted by developers, for two end cap, two drive-through multi-business complex. You can drive down Highway 14 right now and see the display of what was proposed there that all of us knew that was coming in. It wasn't this. Speaking of the developer, let's discuss promises made, promises not kept. The association has spent the last year addressing issues after issue. This developer failed to do or knowingly leave a mess. A burn belong to single-family homes in Yellow Fox. Instead of correcting their mistake, they left it in the homeowner's yards for them to deal with, some with a potential spending $1,000 to correct in order to have a premium lot they expected when purchased. A playground with swings and more slides promoted every homeowner by the agents. We were told, too bad. Many cabinets and umbrellas at the pool near this proposed gas station. We were told, too bad. Sidewalks still need repair due to cracks from when they were building. A dog park or additional parking on Yellow Fox by the single-family homes. Instead, they changed their scope, like they are trying to do here, and built two more homes on the lot. 30-plus water sprinkler systems in the townhomes controlled by 30-plus control boxes meant to be in garages. Those are meant, those are indoor control panels. Instead, they sit outside on two-by-fours behind townhomes HVAC systems. Trees left in pots along Planters Place. All those trees died. We are one of the few, if not the only, community recently where the developer fired a property management company because they were fighting for homeowner's rights. They didn't like it and instead chose William Douglas, which became a complete disaster showing their incompetence with anything HOA and homeowner-related. The Board fired them in March. Another promise made, but not kept. The Board became aware of a small piece of parcel that is inside the townhomes. This developer still owns it, and it failed to transfer due to taking of another townhome's property. It has been proven problematic, and we're still waiting for them to transfer the piece of property they own to the homeowner. We've been told it was going to be done recently, still waiting. Yet they insisted to UNC to counsel they were finished with all land transfers and lots within South Farms, and with this assurance, the city released their bond. They are not good stewards of South Farms, nor the city. They never engaged their HOA, the Board, or more importantly, the residents of South Farms, despite what was said earlier. Instead, they want to change the rules in the middle of the fourth quarter, think we would just sit idle. They are wrong. They don't live there, we do.
Mr. Culpepper, I'm asking you.
Sure. We are the ones who would endure more traffic, more crime, and more frustration. We're happy with the distance of the two Spinks and those gas stations. Finally, I'll bring to your attention something that I'm sure the developer hasn't shared with you. A month ago, I received a call from our landscaper. He asked me to meet him on Yellow Fox. A flow of water has been running through CPW's drainage system at a constant rate. It didn't rain in a week and a half, which caused a concern for the water flow. After discussions with the HOA Board, I met with CPW and contacted the city engineer. CPW and the city engineer met with me on Preservation Drive. We were able to pinpoint through previous documents and the watershed map that the developer piped the underground stream running under South Farms to the CPW stormwater drain. This underground freshwater stream will continue to flow with no reason to correct it in the future. So imagine if and when a gasoline cap is at this proposed Circle K, what do you think that gasoline and contaminated water will drain to? I had the pleasure of serving on a planning board before, and I know your job isn't easy. It's a fine balance between development, private property rights, and the environment. But I ask you to ask the developer one question. Which one of these promises I mentioned have they kept? Vote no.
All right, next is Mike Caston.
Mike Caston, 525 Yellow Fox Road. I'm not going to go into lots of, lots of details. I would, I would say that the picture that showed the current state of the development is very deceiving. That thing has weeds this tall, junk piles in four or five places. When it rains, the debris coming off the property prevents people from using the sidewalk that was put there for people to walk on. And my indicator of what the problem will be is a nine-pound dog that I have, and in the mornings and in the evenings, she barks every time somebody walks by there that is out exercising, not using the sidewalk that is weed-infested across the street, which was part of the original deal. And I'm guessing she barks about 30 times in the morning and about 30 times in the evening. This community, our yard, our backyard faces a car wash that has, buzzer goes off at about 80 decibels about 50 times a day and goes into 9 o'clock at night. We do not need traffic coming in and lights coming into our house from a gas station all day and all night. It's a very, we looked into this when we bought the property and were told, if you want to see what they're going to put out there, walk up there and look at the poster that George just alluded to. And now they decide, after they've done what George just described, now they're going to change the rules again? I, if you're guessing, I'm opposed.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to hold their applause until the last speaker speaks because there again, you're just delaying the process. Next, we have John Alford.
My name is John Alford. I live at 109 Yellow Fox Road, and I'm opposed for the development of the Circle K, again for what we've heard in here, the crime, even gas fumes, and the fact that there's gas stations and convenience stores in the local area. And for that reason, I oppose that and all the congestion possibility in that area, too.
Thanks, sir. All right, next we have, looks like Matt Farrell.
Matt Farrell, 531 Yellow Fox Road. I second most of the, I'm against the Circle K, and I second the points that people prior to me made. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, Rhonda Farrell. Rhonda Farrell.
Hi. I'm Rhonda Farrell. I live at 531 Yellow Fox Road. And the development, the gas station, we're about, oh, about that second or third, if you see the picture, if you can put up the picture. It's about the, that, this one, two, three buildings down, and we're at that corner, and the gas station is going to be right in our backyard when we go out. Now, I'm not opposed to having development there, but I am opposed to the gas station. We do need... A small market couldn't hurt, a small restaurant, a doctor's office. I'm fine with any of that, but we really don't need any more gas stations like other people have said. The QT is down the road, and the hot spot is down the road, and the Spinks is down Suber. We really don't need another gas station. It's just, it's too much. And I am opposing it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We have Nina Kramer.
Hi. My name is Nina Kramer. I live at 541 Yellow Fox Road. I echo the sentiment of most of the thoughts that my neighbors have expressed. To be clear, I am not anti-development. I bought in a community that was a new development. And at that time, I was promised a beautiful retail space, retail boutiques, restaurants. I still retain the communications from the developer, from D.R. Horton, of what would be there. May I share a visual aid?
Sure.
With the panel? This is a photograph of the property from my bedroom. So take a moment, close your eyes, put yourself in your own bedroom right now. It's your sanctuary. Now, look out that window. Floodlights, gas station, convenience store. As I believe Timothy has already noted, the data of the crime that is known to be at convenience stores. I have two girls. There's no fence, there's no wall, there's no privacy. Our HOA guidelines prohibit townhomes from having fences right there. If we were to have this convenience store, I foresee our HOA dues going up to add security, to change potentially the ability to have a fence, so we would all incur fees, costs, high costs, to protect ourselves. And I'd also like to counter one statement that the applicant made. He was defining et cetera for the list of things that would go in a retail space. Et cetera does not mean a list of unknowns. Et cetera means a list of similar things. Thank you.
Looks like we have Dani Brammer?
My name is Dani Brower, and I live at 541 Yellow Fox Road. I can tell you, I'm young, and you see that I'm young. Put yourself in the shoes of a sixteen-year-old girl who will look at a gas station, who doesn't know what people will be there and what crime I may see or experience when I'm going to work at 5:15 a.m. So I'm clearly opposed of the convenience store with gas pumps behind our property. Also, do we all remember the traffic circle that they put into Gibbs Shoals? That caused terrible traffic everywhere, and we had to detour towards, through different neighborhoods. And many people continue to use that detour as a convenient way. People will start detoring through our neighborhood, our place, and witness the children playing in the streets, the teenagers walking around, and the adults walking through the neighborhood and exercising. We do not know what a convenience store can bring. So that is why I oppose this gas station.
Thank you. All right. Mike Boggs.
My name is Mike Boggs. I live at 306 Suther Farms Drive, which is part of the Suther Farms development in the townhome section. I won't repeat all of the things that have been said by my neighbors. Nice to meet you all. We've heard about the crime statistics. We've heard about, a little bit about, maybe that the traffic won't increase, but it surely will increase the entering and exiting right around that congested area, especially as we heard about the folks who are going to the schools every morning during the school year. In my mind, all of those things affect my and my neighbors' rights to quiet enjoyment. It will have lower safety, lower... And I don't know if this has been mentioned yet, but I do see that our property values will go down if this particular development is put in place. Will have litter, lights, loud noises, potential odors, and environmental impact. As a citizen of Greer, I urge denial of the change of the Suther Farms' statement of intent. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Christina Shiltonlin.
Christina Shiltonlin, 319 Suther Farms Drive. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioners, for being here and planning staff. I would just like to express that I oppose this change. One, because the gas station that's coming in does not match the character of our community. Two, as many people mentioned, the crime rates. What I fear is that we're going to have to hire additional law enforcement officers, thus increasing our tax rate that we're going to have to pay because we'll have to need that additional staffing from the crime that's going to occur here. I also have, take issue with the environmental and health impacts that this gas station's going to have on our community. I have lived in a community where gas has gotten into the groundwater, and it has killed residents and caused them to get leukemia. And I don't want to go through that again or have any of my neighbors here go through that with gasoline getting into the groundwater. Also, this is not going to be my first home, and I'm concerned about upward mobility because I do want to eventually get a new home. I have a child, so I'm going to need one. And I want my, I don't want my property value to decline in the sense that I can't go and pursue another home in the future in Greer. Finally, I come here with a solution, and that is that the developer come to the table and sit with all of us and come up with a collective option for how to develop that piece of property that we can all agree on, and that they get buy-in from each and every one of us so that we can come with a better solution. I want to be here championing the developer with their, with a solution that we all agree on. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Annette Hallett.
Annette Hallett, 582 Yellow Fox Road. I also have a list of issues, and I won't repeat all of them for the sake of time. But I do take... I don't want to say offense. I don't mean offense. I don't want to be nasty. But if we think that trash is not going to increase, if we think that traffic is not going to increase, you're delusional. We do not have a gated community. I think I can speak for most of the people here that we're not the upper crust. We're middle-class people. We enjoy our neighborhood. We don't want the increased traffic coming from Suber, coming from 14, that is going to try and cut through our development. We have little kids that don't listen to their parents, let alone listen to cars. So when these cars come barreling down our streets, we don't want our kids to be hit. My biggest concern, though, and this one has not been mentioned, is this gas station is in very close proximity to our community pool. I don't want people coming in in the middle of the night when it's ninety degrees outside and eighty percent humidity and thinking, hey, I'm going to go jump in the pool, you know, while we're traveling. I think this is a dangerous precedence to be set when we were also people that were told when we moved in that there was going to be small businesses in that area and that a gas station was not going in there. So I do oppose the gas station. As others have said, I'm not opposed to building in that area. It just needs to be something that is convenient to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It looks like Von Selick Hill? Or Hill?
Vanessa.
Is it Vanessa? Okay. I'll take your word for it.
So my name is Vanessa Kill. I live at 105 Preservation Drive in Suther Farms. I am here to speak on behalf of additional people that could not come today. I have a position, a position, blah, position, signed by a hundred and sixty-plus people in the community and around the area, not just in our neighborhood, that oppose the gas station slash convenience store. I just want to make one more point, that the current plans of the way that you have two exits or entrances onto Stockyard Road there behind, that is an area where there's lots of children that ride their bikes and run, and people walk their dogs there. And if you have a lot of traffic going in and out of there, it's going to end up being a major safety concern. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but there's at least over a hundred kids that just, elementary-age children that live in that neighborhood that go to Woodland Elementary. So you're setting up for basically a disaster to happen with those entrances and exits on that street. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Heather Barick.
Heather Barick at 439 Yellow Fox Road. I also serve as vice president of the HOA, and would like to echo our president, George Cole Pepper's comments earlier. One additional aspect I will bring to the board and the planning committee is the pedestrian view. So while we know the traffic will increase via cars, we are not a pedestrian-friendly area, unfortunately. So there is no actual value to pedestrians coming into a gas station or a convenience store of any kind. It would be left to literally our neighborhood of who would walk there because you cannot be accessed anywhere else, and you shouldn't. I'm an avid runner. I run for a world record holder, actually. And you can really not run effectively in the area. It's hard to exercise. People have commented about walking dogs, and it is already very trafficked enough. I've almost been hit by three cars personally myself, just because Suber is so tight. And if somebody would like to slow down to turn into our neighborhood, you risk being rear-ended. And having an added stress, an added traffic point, is just going to make it that much worse, on top of all the other comments that have already been mentioned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Jerry Hilton.
Jenny.
Jenny. Okay.
Hi. I'm Jenny Hilton. I'm at 553 Yellow Fox Road. I signed up thinking that I didn't have to speak. So I agree with all of my neighbors. I have two daughters. We back up to Stockyard Drive. We walk our dog. I'm worried about their safety. I'm worried about the environment, our property values, noise, pollution, traffic, all of it. So I'm here with my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
You did good. Thank you. All right. That is all that we have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this matter before us, final development plan, or I'm sorry, yeah, FDP 2306?
And if you wouldn't mind, there's a sign-in sheet right by the podium. If you could just do your name and address after you're finished. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Annie Boydott. I live at 100 Planters Place in the Suther Farm community. So one point that I had going off of Annette's point with the gas station being so close to the pool is it could make us, as women especially, feel extremely uncomfortable and unsafe being in bathing suits at a place that is so public for a bunch of other people to be around. They could lurk, potentially follow us home. So it could just be another safety issue for children, women, men, obviously also, but more of a risk, I think, for women and children especially. So just being, you know, in bathing suits and being in close proximity to such a public place of a gas station, just for safety issues. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak for or against final development plan 2306? Yes, ma'am. We'll come to you in a minute. I saw her hand come up first.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. You sit down, and I'm going to let her come first.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
My name is Tammy Hooper, and I live at 507 Yellow Fox Road in the Suther Farms community. And a couple of points I wanted to make that we haven't heard tonight is about the hours that this store is going to be open. I want you to think about late nights, all of those lights. We're in our beds, we're sleeping. We hear the traffic coming in and out. We hear the people outside talking. Someone mentioned earlier the sounds that we get already from the car wash. I don't live on Stockyard. I live kind of catty-corner to that car wash, and I hear the car wash. I hear during Halloween, all of the ghoul sounds and all the noises, all the way past eleven o'clock at night. I'm imagining the lights that those people are going to be getting that live on that street, the traffic that they're going to be hearing, being able to sleep at night whenever you're getting all of that noise. People have already mentioned the trash. I'm thinking of the fumes. Think about where that dumpster is going to be located. Yes, I'm guessing there's probably going to be a fence around that dumpster, but think about what comes to dumpsters. Now, we have all the animals that are drawn to the dumpsters. So I'm just imagining the backside of a convenience store, literally right outside my patio. I'm sitting on my patio, and I'm smelling trash. I'm seeing trash. Just the idea of that is not appealing to me, and to think about my neighbors, that is what they're going to be looking at going forward. I would imagine that you would not want to see that in your backyard either. So I'm in alignment with the rest of my neighbors that this is not something that we would want to see on that corner, representing our neighborhood, really. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Denise Gillican. I live at 106 Yellow Fox Road, and I have lived in Greer my entire life. And I didn't expect I'd get up here and speak tonight, but I am against this. I'm retired, and I bought a house in Suther Farms, and I want to continue living there, but I'm so afraid the value of my home will go down due to this service station, convenience store. And as the others have said, it is going to be very congested there because of the type of people that it will be bringing in. We've got to give our community a chance and stop building all of these car washes, all of these convenience stores. The roads are not improving, and Suber Road is an old farm road that was never meant to have the traffic that it has on it, nor Gibbs Shoals Road. So please, consider our thoughts and our concerns for our children and our families. We want to have a nice, quiet neighborhood, not a convenience store where there's all kinds of activity going on throughout the day and night. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against? All right. I saw your hand come up first in the back. And again, something we haven't already heard, and we don't want to be rehashing points that we've already heard.
My name is Rob Stanchel, and I'm 119 General Storeway in Greer. And are you able to switch back to the other picture quickly? So this picture tells you a lot. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. Well, what's left out of this picture is the monument that says Suther Farms to the left. And whatever's built in this area is going to become part of our community. It's going to become... It's going to become what we're known for. And to think that that doesn't have an adverse effect on property values is just silly. Putting a Circle K there, it's going to drop our property values like crazy. Also, everybody that's in the room that opposes this could just stand up quickly to give you a better idea. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I saw, I saw one more hand come up. Yes, sir.
Matthew Garberino, 108 Planters Place. As you said, we're not going to beat a dead horse with the same points. But something that nobody's brought up is that this developer wants to bring money to Greer. I didn't know Circle K was a Greer company. Most of this money will be going back to that corporation. If we bring in, I don't know, a local bakery or grocery store, that money's going to be staying right here in Greer and improving the community. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against Final Development Plan 23-06? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for Final Development Plan And we will move on to RZ 23-04.
This case is RZ 23-04. The, the address is 211 Arlington Road. The parcel ID number is 9-03-13-021.00. The existing zoning is C2 Commercial District and the request is to rezone to DRD Design Review District.
Folks, we're still conducting business. If you want to speak, go out into the lobby. The meeting is not over just because you've been allowed to speak or sit here. So if you need to get up and leave, do so very quietly, please.
So, and just so everyone understands, we have a public hearing for each case and then it closes and then we will open a new business meeting for each case where the Board will ask questions of the applicant and staff and then the Board will vote and make a recommendation on each case. So you are welcome to leave since you made your comment, but if you're interested in the actual vote, I just wanted to explain the format of the meeting.
Thank you. This is an aerial of the subject property. This is the current zoning map. The red is C2 Commercial. The light green is RM1 Multifamily Residential. The purple in the top corner is C3 Highway Commercial and the gold is DRD Design Review District. The future land use is traditional neighborhood. Here's a photo of the existing conditions of the site. And here is the preliminary site plan. The statement of intent describes a bed and breakfast business model, restoring the existing home as an innkeeper's home and building six one-bedroom, one-bathroom, short-term rental units. There will be some green space with social, social gathering areas and 12 parking spaces will be provided, four parallel spaces along Moss and eight in the site parking lot. Here is a digital rendering of the site and a photo of what the rental units will look like. And that completes my presentation.
All right, do we have the applicant present?
Nicholas Myers, 701 Easy-Bridg- Easy-Bridge Road. I'm with Seaman Whiteside. Robert Julian is the developer for this project. We are his engineer and landscape architect of record. I believe you might have some additional renderings queued up we could share. I'm gonna let Robert give a quick, explain sort of what his, his idea is behind the project and I'm gonna hand you guys a printout of these renderings to have.
We'll go through those renderings during new business. All right, go ahead, sir.
Okay, name is Rob Julian. I'm the landowner and developer for the properties. I live in Greenville, South Carolina. The concept of this property, this property I've had probably about a good seven years and we're trying to figure a way to monetize this property and do a, a nice improvement to this piece of parcel here. So the concept we came in with is, is the bed and breakfast, which is basically, the building is more of a historic-type building in nature and we wanted, wanted to preserve the character of that original building. We had, we had a couple other ideas and one was, one was a barber school with some, and one was a real estate office, et cetera, et cetera. But we came up with this one concept. It's, it's gonna, monetarily-wise, it's gonna take quite a bit to, to put this to where we want it. And we want it to be a nice anchor project along that corridor. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that particular property along that corridor and we're thinking it's going to be a pretty nice anchor for that, along that line. I was just going to read you, instead of me just kind of wandering here, I'll just kind of read you the, the intent, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. This project is an upscale anchor bed and breakfast on the north side of Greer. The short-term bed and breakfast hybrid will enhance the tourism for the city of Greer. Our experience with the short-term dwelling concept has worked well in and for the city of Travelers Rest. I brought that up because we help initiate some of the Airbnb ordinance for the Travelers Rest and it's worked out fairly well out there. The project consists of rehab and improvements of the existing historic state home along with the carefully-placed modern short-term rentals on .63 acres along Arlington Road. This project is walking distance, about five minutes bike distance from the city park in downtown Greer. The main estate home will be designed as an innkeeper's home with rental management facilities. This building will be designed to original style with historic reference to old Greer rail station and history. The modern short-term vacation rentals will be a one-bedroom, one-bath with half or full kitchens. And of course, you guys see the renderings there, give you an idea of the conceptual. The only thing that's not on the renderings that we'll probably add will be like a wrought iron fence around the front to give you that, more of that historic feel. And then, of course, I provided some actual photos of, of some of the stuff we've done in the past. The overall site design is an estate park design with green space, game and social areas. Interior lighted path will meander through the garden areas along with water features that leads to the main sidewalk to city along, to the city along Arlington Road. Bikes and bike racks will be provided and encourage a more laid-back experience. Trees and modern fencing to the rear inside will provide privacy to the project. The wrought iron-style fencing in front will emphasize the old estate feel and charm. The zen water features provide a relaxed feel. A gameplay area along with social gathering area will provide a friendly atmosphere. Hence, you'll see in there like we have a full-size bocce ball court, okay? The innkeeper home office will provide menus, venues and maps of downtown Greer for incoming visitors. The innkeeper home will be open to social gathering. Coffee and pastries from local venues can be provided in common social areas. Local historic pictures and themes such as railroads shall be placed in welcoming areas and also in the short-term rental units. We will go through historic records and photos to outline Greer's history. Old pictures of Main Street, the railroad station, et cetera, et cetera, to, to provide a theme, a welcoming theme. Modern high ceilings, the vacation rentals themselves, our modern high ceiling windows and outdoor decking provide furnishings to bring the outside in. Modern one-bedroom, one-bath to half to full kitchens are provided along with laundry in each unit. Also, modern railroad and main house themes will be created for each unit such as like the old carriage house photos, et cetera, et cetera. On the technical side, stormwater, LID, low-impact environmental drainage such as dry swells, rain barrels, wetland grasses will be provided as needed to give it that, more of that park character. Currently, there are three electrical meters at the main house. We may either master meter the, the units or sub-panel or meter each unit. CPW handles the sewer. Capacity line is available along Moss Street and Rear Lot. Most likely, a main private line with appropriate cleanouts will be run to provide lateral services to each unit. Water, three, three water meters are existing on the site. Most likely, we'll increase a meter to a master meter for all the units. The infrastructure, fire, of course, the city of Greer Fire Department. Six parking spaces currently exist along Moss Street. They're gonna be converted to four parallel and eight new spaces will be provided, so we'll have a total of 10 spaces. That's about 1.45 spaces per unit plus an extra for ADA requirements. Garbage pickup, there'll be an in-ground unit in the parking area, private pickup. And our intent is to pull permits with one year of the DRD approval. Conclusion, the state park and garden bed and breakfast historic theme will blend well with the existing and continuing improvements within the city of Greer. This project will also encourage improvements and investments along Arlington Road. Tourism effect will support restaurants, venues and businesses of downtown Greer. Having this property for, just something I want to add, since I do other properties, also I have property on the other side of railroad, of the train station, which you guys probably might be aware of the development possibly going there. Seeing how, what Greer has done to the downtown and what Greer has done to the north side, pushing towards the park, is, is gave us the comfort field to do something and invest our dollars along that avenue. That's why we're proposing to do this nice, high-end-type project as an anchor along that corridor. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against RZ 23-04? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for RZ 23-04. Anybody need a break? Ms. Jones? Everybody's good? All right, before we move on to new business, I would like to ask Ms. Kill, Vanessa Kill, if she's still here, the petition that you have, would you please pass that to somebody at staff, please? I should've got that from you when you said that. Okay, we're gonna move on to the new business portion. During this portion of the meeting, we will ask staff to make the official recommendation for each item that is before us tonight. We will, staff will read the full report and then the developer or the applicant will come to the podium and at that point, the commission will ask questions of staff, the applicant, possibly even you in the audience. But the time for you to ask questions or to make comments has passed, okay? That was done during the public hearing. So I don't want any comments coming from the audience, you know, clapping, whooping, hollering, anything like that, okay? So we will make a recommendation based on the information that we receive from staff, from the report, from the applicant and from the folks in the audience. We will make a recommendation and we will either vote to go with what they've recommended or we may vote to do something different. At that point, that recommendation from us goes to City Council. We are not the final decision-maker except for the Final Development Plan applications that we have tonight because that's already gone through this entire process. So on the items that are just getting started or big changes, that will go before council and they will be the decision-makers on that. So with that being said, we will open the new business portion of the meeting and first item is Final Development Plan 23-03.
The address for this item is Valentine Road and the request is Final Development Plan Approval. Here's the Final Development Plan. The surrounding land uses are unzoned Spartanburg County, there's C2 Commercial to the east, unzoned Spartanburg County to the south and R12 to the west. The Final Development Plan meets the adopted statement of intent and therefore staff recommends approval.
All right, applicant present?
Mike Lucas, 6 Katigan Drive, Simpsonville, and I'm with GMC Network, we're the civil engineers for the project. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anything you want to add? Anything you want to tell us?
No, I'll keep it short. We're, any questions you have, just let us know.
Do we have any questions for that?
Has anything major changed since the last time we saw this?
No, sir.
All right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Contact staff for next steps.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Apologize for the long meeting. Final Development Plan 23-04.
This is FDP 2304. The address is 305 Tryon Street and the request is Final Development Plan Approval. Here's the Final Development Plan. The surrounding land uses are residential and unzoned Greenville County residential. The Final Development Plan meets the adopted statement of intent and therefore staff recommends approval.
All right, applicant?
My name is Colin Sekala. I'm the developer. I'm standing in for the civil engineer, but, oh, 126 South Spearman Drive in Greer, South Carolina.
Please.
I don't have anything to add to that.
All right.
How many, how many units is this?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
That's, is that what, was approved originally?
It was.
Okay.
Actually, it was approved for more than that, wasn't it?
Mm-mm.
Is that correct? It's reduced?
Was it up to sixty? I read fifty-four this morning, so.
That's right. That's right. Radio station building come down yet?
Not yet.
Do we have any questions?
Is there, is there plans for any buffer to go around this thing or no? Like any fencing, any?
So there's landscape, there's some landscape buffers. We have a landscape plan. I don't have that with me, but I don't know. Do you guys have a landscape design that was submitted?
Did not bring one with us.
There is a, there is a landscape design for, basically the whole site has to be cleared just because of elevation change as far as the trees and things like that, but there is a landscape plan in place and it's according to the requirements, so.
Yeah, the landscape plan has been approved by staff during the SDP process and meets all of the proposed renderings and information included in statement of intent.
Perfect.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
All right, contact staff for next steps, please, sir. This time we'll open the new business portion for Final Development Plan 23-05.
The address for this item is Lorela Street Extension and the request is Final Development Plan Approval. Here's the Final Development Plan. The surrounding zoning and land uses are multifamily residential to the north, commercial to the east and south, and multifamily residential to the west. Staff, the Final Development Plan meets the adopted statement of intent, therefore staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Applicant?
Mark Benz with Site Design, 225 Rocky Creek Road, Greenville, South Carolina. We are the engineers and surveyors for the project.
Anything else you want to tell us?
I think everything's been covered.
All right. Any questions for Mark? Have a motion?
Yep, motion to approve.
You have a motion for approval? Have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Thank you. Contact staff for next steps. All right, Final Development Plan 23-07.
The address is 712 North Main Street and the request is Final Development Plan Approval. Here's the Final Development Plan. The surrounding land uses are largely residential except for C3 Commercial to the south. The Final Development Plan meets the adopted statement of intent and therefore staff recommends approval.
Okay, applicant present?
Good evening, I'm Josh Garrison with Gray Engineering. This is Matthew Christian with Gray Engineering, 101 Fair Ridge Way. No changes.
No changes. No changes. This one's been a long time coming, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right. What'd you guys work out about the Highway 14 parking situation along 14?
They'll all be parking in their driveways or their garage.
Okay. They'll be entering off of Wildwood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Any further questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Have another motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
All right, fellas, contact staff for next steps. All right, now we come to Final Development Plan 2306.
This is Final Development Plan 2306. The address is 402 East Super Road, and the request is a statement of intent, major change. The requested amendment to the statement of intent is here. Here's the existing conditions of the site. Here's the preliminary site plan. The residential portion is 100% built out. All residents who purchased and rented their, or rented their home did so based on the current statement of intent. The current statement of intent states that the commercial piece would be tenants that would complement the community and surrounding neighborhoods. Such uses could be restaurants, a bank, small retail stores, a car wash, storage facility, professional offices, et cetera. A gasoline station with convenience sales is a primarily auto-oriented use for pass-by The surrounding zoning and land uses are DRD Design Review District to the north, unzoned Greenville County to the south and east, commercial and residential. And to the west is DRD Design Review District, so the South Farm residential uses. The staff recommendation is denial. However, if planning commission recommends approval, staff encourages incorporating enhanced landscape buffer along Stockyard Drive into the statement of intent and site plan exhibits.
All right, applicant?
Statement again?
Yes.
Brent Edgerton, 433 Circle Drive, Greer.
All right, so you've heard the large amount of comments that we've gotten, negative about your development. What can you speak to some of the fears and
Sure.
concerns that these folks here have?
Sure, I'd love to. So, as the staff just read, I think a tenant of their recommendation for denial was a statement of intent. And as I alluded to in my comments, again, the fact that car wash and childcare was not an accident, it was specific, they simply didn't want to list all the uses. We had actually talked to previous staff who is no longer employed, so that's somewhat irrelevant. When we bought the property, we were told that several uses were in play, including the ones we got approved by the HOA, by the residential HOA. They talked about, the staff mentioned a moment ago, that statement of intent was what the residents used to make their, partially to make decisions to buy homes in there, when in fact there are restrictions and covenants that were recorded in March of 2020, and I'm glad to read you the part of that if you'd like, or get you a copy of it, clearly states and contemplates a convenience store use that had already previously been approved by the developer. Another thing I want to say, by the way, for the record, this is important to me, we are not the developer that sold you your lots and your homes. We're not D.R. Horton, we're not Four Star Group, that is not us. We have nothing to do with them. We bought the land from them, just like you bought your home from them. So we have nothing, sorry for the issues I've heard tonight, I'd be mad too if I was in your neighborhood, but those were not promises that we made, we have no standing in that arena, okay? There was some mention about views, and there was no landscape buffer, there was no fence there, in fact, and staff can help you with this, but the site plans that have been submitted are substantial landscape buffers, in fact, and Representative for Circle K is here, I'm happy to let him speak if you want, but they, in fact, the original proposal was a prototype of, I think, 5,200 square feet under roof, which is fairly small to begin with. But the last proposal we gave leading up to this as a proposal had an, very enhanced landscape buffer between Stockyard Road, or the townhomes for the sake of this conversation, and the back of the store. There will be no back door to the store, so there'll be, someone said something about trash, there's going to be in-ground waste containment, which is now per usual city of Greer. If anybody's seen that, it's not a dumpster, there is no smell, there is no overflow. But they, when they lowered the prototype of that store, they
Placing it was 24%, correct?
So 5,200 to what was the square footage?
It's like 39, 63.
To 3,900, less than 4,000 square feet. They did that to be able to make a proposal to the city of an enhanced landscape buffer, far as I know, bigger than, for that prototype, bigger than it had ever done before. Stockyard Road's been brought up a few times of walking dogs and kids playing, that is actually a private road that is owned by the landowners. That is not a public road, it is a private road. Not saying, we're telling you not to walk your dog or whatever you want to do, but it is a private road, it's not a public road meant to be used for recreational use. I've heard a lot of talk about traffic. What most of you probably don't know, but is in public record, is that the owners of the land have bonded with DOT, D cell lanes coming toward Super Road on Highway 14, and on, on Highway 14 coming toward Super Road, correct, toward that corner, and on Super Road leading to Highway 14, there are plans in place, and it's mandatory, there's no choice, the developer has to put in D cell lanes that bonded with DOT. That bond's been renewed for three years, just waiting for critical mass of development to do so. So that'll address the traffic per DOT standards and city of Greer standards.
Is not your sign, South Farm signs that's out there with the water feature, is that not in the right of way of the D cell lane?
So that's not our, again, we're not the developer that develops South Farms. The developer placed that sign there and demanded a sign adjustment to put that sign in, that was not our choice either.
But my question to you is, will that not have to go away when the D cell lanes are put in place?
No, sir, it's not in the way of the D cell lanes.
Quick question about those DOT improvements?
Yes.
So, southbound, you've got a D cell lane, a right-hand dedicated right-hand turn lane into the driveway or onto Super Road?
No, so into Stockyard Road on Super, the D cell lane coming from the
What about the one on 14? You mentioned
You go into South Farms Drive, which is a public road.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not going to come all the way down to the corner there?
No, to go to the public road, and then there's a light at the corner, which there's already six lanes, so, but there is a D cell lane to go to South Farms Drive. Then Stockyard Road was mandated
I'm not familiar exactly what South Drive, Road Drive is.
Um, if you can, if you guys can pull up.
So you're saying D cell lane, is the, South Farms, what'd you call it, South Farms?
South Farms Drive.
Is that the drive in between the daycare and the car wash?
Yes.
So that's a D cell lane there?
That will be a D cell lane coming from downtown
Okay, I see the sidewalks offset currently from what they've got.
Yeah.
So, and also, where was the other one on Super Road?
Super Road leading to the light at the intersection of Super and 14.
So there's like a dedicated right-hand turn lane onto 14, southbound?
No, no, it'd be a left-hand turn, D cell lane on Super Road coming from Gibb Shoals toward 14.
Okay, so it'd be a left-hand turn onto the private drive?
Correct.
Okay. So is South Farms Road Lane, is that completely private?
No, that's public.
South Farms is public, Stockyard Drive is private.
Stockyard is.
And if you want to do the arrow, it's the
So there's still going to be a D cell lane created, even the sidewalks are already in place?
Yeah, see, you see right here
Why, they made the indention, yeah.
There, here, there's a, it's not really a D cell lane, it'd be a dedicated left-hand turn lane on Stockyard.
Right, okay.
So effectively it'll be widened by DOT standards
Right.
specific to that development, to the commercial development.
Much of the tape is there, but.
Most of us were here when this development was presented to us initially, and it was a very nice rendering of a grocery store and some other high-end retail stores.
That was, again, that wasn't us, but
Yeah, but, but, but from, from everybody here's point of view, that's what they bought into, because they invested their money in their townhomes and these residential lots.
If I could speak, can I speak to that? I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You can go ahead, speak.
So, actually, that plan was debunked long before the residential was sold. That was, that was not a part of, that never made into the statement of intent. That's why car wash and childcare did. We were not that group that even talked about grocery store, because that site doesn't support grocery store anchor, quite frankly, it's eight acres. And that would have been 100,000, 80 to 100,000 square feet under roof, whereas the proposal on the table with the retail center, which by the way, I need to add, several people said that's what they, that's still coming, that is still part of the plan. There's four acres there that has not been developed. The Circle K is simply 1.6 acres, and there's ingress egress being added from Highway 14, if the site plan can come back up there, that doesn't even exist yet, where 14 traffic can get directly into the retail center and the convenience store without touching Stockyard or Super. But I would, you know, I contend, Commissioner, respectfully, that if it was a grocery store anchor, the lighting, noise, traffic, everything else would be excessively worse, which was kind of my point, that our plan was much more benign than that.
Can we see a copy of the original statement of intent, I guess? Is that available, or?
You could pull it up if you want, it should be in the folder. Is, or?
Is the HOA president still here?
Yes, sir.
When did you guys take over the neighborhood from the developer?
Well, officially, we took over October, we were promised
October of '22?
October of October last year, yes, sir.
Okay.
But to his point, if you go out there right now, there's still a sign that says KW on it, that has the description of what's supposed to build, we're fine with that. But, but this was never, was never told to us, and, and, and no one, no one ever came to any residents that I know, I mean, the rest of our members, no one, came to talk to any of us about putting this particular building in there. And so it will be problematic in the long run for that convenience store there, but that's created a lot, a lot of issues for, for that, and I hate to say it, but one of the residents is correct. If this comes in, and the HOA has responsibility to ensure that the safety and welfare of our residents are there, and the HOA will have that discussion with the residents, we don't want to do that.
Can I make a comment?
So before
Yes, sir.
Before, or when you, when the HOA took over from the developers
Yes, sir.
Were you guys told about this possibility of a gas station coming, or?
No, sir, no, sir.
What, what were you told about this property?
We, we were told, interesting, we were told
This is hearsay, but, but I want to know what
Yes, we, we were told
Come, come to the podium up here for me.
And so I, George Culpepper, 22 Corble Drive, President of South Farms Homeowners Association. I, I understand your frustration, right? You, you're in the same position that we were in, that we're in right now as homeowners. We were initially told that a Starbucks was going to come to that location, but the Starbucks moved up the road by, by Riverside High School. But we're told either Starbucks, or Dunkin' Donuts, or, or something of that nature, because the, the description on the sign right now says, that I read earlier in my statement, it says two drive-through units on both ends, but, but it's a nice, it's a nice professional development building for, for shopping, or doctor's offices, or, or some type of, of community thing for all the residents to come in, but it's a huge nightmare, and for the residents, because I guarantee you, I know certainly for me, and I'm, I'm inside of it, right? I guarantee you, all those residents who bought townhomes with facing Stockyard, there's no way that they would have bought, knowing that that was coming in. And it's their investment that, that we have to be concerned about, ours too, but more importantly for them. And the problem is, that we're facing another homeowner brought up, is that we're already facing problems with our amenities that we all pay for, and, and the board is trying to manage those amenities the best way we know how. But when, when a gas station comes in, if you don't think, think that, that, that someone, you know, in, in society who wants to take a dip, they'll go in and, and they'll jump the fence and take a dip. And, and that's why we, we created cameras in, in that system, because of the way the development was done. We're fine with, with, you know, with the way things are now, we, we knew a car wash was there, we knew the daycare center was there, some of these residents send their kids to that daycare, but, but the pool is, is not an ideal location for a convenience store to go there, because we're going to have more problems down the road. And I'm telling you, and maybe he's not aware, but there is a freshwater underground stream, and if you walk preservation today, and you follow along that drainage system through, through the CPW's stormwater system, through Corble Drive, and then you take it all the way down to Yellow Fox, and then behind a home that's been having problems selling because of it, that water, it, it starts trickling, and then it gets down and it goes even further, and then it flows down, and now, we're all facing a resident beaver problem because that water is not, is not, is not stopping, and it won't stop because of that underwater stream.
Separate issue from what we're talking about here. So
What was the, what was the early intent of the buffer in between the townhomes and that commercial?
The proposed buffer?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's what's there, I mean, it, it does look pretty substantial, it's obviously fairly new, so 10 years, it will be a lot, look a lot different. Is that what was, was installed, is that what was proposed or approved?
Buying the townhomes, yes.
And then on the development side of the street, would they have to put another buffer up or not?
Only if it's in the statement of intent, I don't believe there's anything that dictates.
We submitted a new landscape buffer, though, that is more significant than city standards.
Is that what's
It's up on the screen.
Yeah.
Sir, it's behind you.
Okay. So that's much more significant than what's called for by the city. I don't have, I'm not the civil engineer, so I don't have the depth, but they moved the building toward 14 in this proposal, and they used all of the extra space for a proposed landscape buffer, and it's more substantial than the 25 feet that was put on the rest of the property. Can I submit the actual restrictions and covenants of their neighborhood?
Sure.
Make sure I don't give you stuff you don't need. I'd like to just read one sentence first, and then I'll submit it. This is the residential HOA restrictions and covenants that were recorded in March of 2020. All buildings, instructions on parcel 1, 2, and 3, as set forth in Exhibit A, heretofore the commercial parcels, shall be reasonably aesthetically compatible with the development of South Farms subdivision, which is to be developed on decorants adjacent property as to materials used for construction exterior look of the buildings. A car wash, daycare center, retail center, which is what Mr. Culpepper has repeated, convenience store, and fast food restaurant, to the extent designed, constructed, and maintained, is substantial compliance with the rentings previously approved by the decorant, prior to the date hereof, and more specifically described on Exhibit B, attached heretofore incorporated herein by reference, shall be allowed on the commercial parcels. This was recorded in Greenville County, March 25th of 2020, before these people bought their homes.
Is that applicable to all, all planted lots out there today?
That was the rest of the land that had not been developed yet, so it was all the way from the car wash to Super.
But in 2020, none of that land had been developed yet, had it?
No, we bought it March 18th. Yes, sir, you're correct.
There hadn't been any houses built in 2020.
That's correct. That's, that's my point, exactly.
But this current HOA board also didn't come up with those covenants and restrictions. That was done by the developer. Now, have you guys, Mr. Culpepper, you come back up here a minute, have you guys looked at that, what he just read, and thought that you need to change that, or?
So, so here's, here's the problem, and I raise this again, right? It's a frustration of this board, because our, the HOA's attorney had come to a dead halt. We can't, we can't change anything, no matter, and, and believe me, the board wants to be proactive to help, help our homeowners, but we are, we have, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to, as, as, as a board, to ensure that the covenants and restrictions that the HOA had established when we bought into it, that we can do it. Right now, we can't change anything. Right now, we can't change anything because, as I mentioned, the developer still has control of our subdivision because that small parcel of land that's inside the townhomes. So our attorney, the HOA attorney, said, "We cannot make any changes until, until that parcel of land has been satisfied." Because it's, they're waiting to transfer it to it because the, the developer took another homeowner's land without asking. And so they're trying to, to, to transfer the deed of the portion of, it's small. It's really small, but the developer still owns that land. And so we cannot, we cannot do anything. We can't change anything in our covenants and restrictions until that parcel of land is, is satisfied. The HOA attorney will, will not move forward on it.
But what you're saying is there's a board, but you really don't have any control.
That's correct.
So you, you're not allowed to revise or amend these CCRs until that piece of property is deeded or conveyed to who?
And to, to the, to the homeowner, that's, to the town homeowner that's on there. But yes, you are absolutely correct. And it's something that, that, you know, that the board has, has been frustrated with. But that's why, you know, because we, we have changes that we want, we want to make, but we cannot do it. But to be fair and open and transparent with you, we cannot do anything until that deed is, has been transferred.
Are, are these CCR, are these declaration covenants restrictions, are they applicable to the commercial aspect of the property? They're not. But these are only to the, the single-family attached and detached lots.
Correct, but in reference, so we bought the land based on the contingency of our proposed use of potential uses being approved by the HOA prior to closing, which was March 18th, 2020. You see, they have a report March 25th.
Okay, say, say that, say that statement one more time. You, you said you, you bought the property based on-
Based on the contingency that proposed uses. So we didn't just buy the property and hope that it would stick with the HOA. That would be a little foolhardy. So what you see there in the restrictions and covenants was the declarant addressing potential uses we gave them. It includes the retail center, which Mr. Culpepper and others mentioned. Again, that is going to be developed, that's going to be there. That's only, that only takes up less than two acres. There's four acres there. So that's not, that's not a false promise. That's going to happen. But the developer, the current developer, not the one that they're having all the issues with in the residential segment, has to monetize this in order to do the retail center that has been promised, quite frankly. But we, what you're reading there was a direct reflection of our negotiations with the seller of the property, which is the developer of their lots.
And this is, this is pretty much what everybody bought off?
Not pretty much, just 100%. That's, that's what was public record, that was restrictions and covenants that you bought in that neighborhood. Yes, sir. That's why I pushed back on statement of intent being used as what the residents should have used as their deciding factor.
Well, statement of intent is going on before-
Yeah, I was about to say, can a, can a homeowners association dictate that over a statement of intent that was issued by the city?
The CCRs have nothing to do with our zoning, to be honest. I, I mean, I, I get where he's coming from with the homeowners should have known and read their CCRs, but that is not the zoning. The zoning is the statement of intent and the site plan.
I completely agree with Ashley. My, my rebuttal to that, however, would be, because I do think there are two separate documents. That's exactly my argument as well, just with a different conclusion. The statement that was read in the case file was that because residents bought their property based on the statement of intent, that is absolutely, should be incorrect when they had CCRs before they bought the property that says a convenience store is pre-approved.
I agree that homeowners should read their CCRs, but my experience is they don't. And the marketing materials were heavily based on the statement of intent and site plan and renderings that were shown. So, I'm just-
So, obviously, y'all made, y'all made a denial, or recommended denial.
Staff does recommend denial, mostly because this is a mixed-use community. We think, again, per the statement of intent, that these uses should be compatible and integrate with the neighborhood. We think this is going to be pass-by traffic, auto-oriented, 24-hour use. We just don't feel this is compatible with a mixed-use neighborhood.
Do we have any other examples of this in the city limits?
With a gas station in a mixed use?
Pretty much, yes.
Not that I'm aware of. There may be gas station adjacent to residential, but as far as a DRD or PD project, not to my knowledge.
I mean, yeah, I can't think of one.
I can't either.
I mean, that Spinks right there, Subur Road, would be the closest. But I think there's commercial around that, isn't there? There's the Prisbo.
Yeah, that one, the, with the MD360. I, I don't-
I think there's, it's not adjacent to that.
McCollum High School.
Right, it's at the corner.
Right.
I think there's.
Okay, do we have any further questions, comments for the applicant? Or for staff?
So I just want to make sure that everyone is kind of tracking. So we have the statement of, of intent, which was the initial step. And then the CCRs were created in 2020. That was provided to all the homeowners with the language of the convenience store in it. But the statement of intent has the et cetera, the car wash and, and all that.
Well, it says, yeah, and it says, I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me anymore. But yes, it was, all of that was discussed. That's more anecdotal, because I can't hand you what the conversations were with the city agri. We didn't know for sure that the proposal was going to be a C-store. We knew that the retail center would come, and we already had things on paper with childcare and car wash. That's why I keep saying it wasn't a coincidence that car wash and retail were specifically listed. But they weren't supposed to be, you know, someone said, "Well, it, it, that means, et cetera" could mean that it's like things, but everybody said they hate the car wash. So we're trying to do something better than that. We specifically prohibited another car wash. We prohibited the convenience store from having a car wash on site. They agreed. They lowered their prototype at our recommendation. They added landscape buffer at our recommendation. We have a private road. We have $400,000 worth of D cell lanes that have to be built by the same landowners. So we, we feel like we tried to make it as benign and least intrusive as possible. That's it. But to your point, the SOI, the statement of intent, that was between the city and the developer, the key component to what people have to live by that have their front yards and backyards adjacent to this development is the CCRs, which was recorded and presented prior to anyone owning a home.
But that is what we have to go off of.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, we can't go off anything other than the statement.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that statement, except that my, my problem with that is that it's, it's being overlapped with the reason for staff recommending denial. One of the first things I read from the case file was that the residents made their decisions based on the statement of intent. That's why it's relevant. I don't find that to be plausible.
What if we table this to get more information? What does that do, just talking out loud? What does that do for these folks and for the developer and for the city?
I mean, it would just delay a final decision. I, that's the only thing that it would do. What sort of information are you interested in obtaining?
I'm not really sure. I mean, you know.
Just to give you one more opportunity to, I guess, defend the, your stance. What benefit would this bring to Southern Farms and Greer?
Well, look, I, I had three kids go through Riverside High School. I, for 12 years straight, at four years apart, for 12 years straight, I made a left turn. I came from the other side of 85 at the time. I had a career address on the other side of 85 at the time. I made a left-hand turn on Subur Road. There was no infrastructure there. There was no retail. There was no, I could get gas where my kids could get gas. More importantly, breakfast, coffee, whatever. So although people say that stuff's all over the place, it's not convenient. It is not convenient if you're going to the Riverside section or Gibbs Shoals section, or if you're going, taking Subur Road all the way to Wade Hampton. So unless you're going to stop at the cattle call that is Spinks and QT back there, the other side of the coin is people come from downtown Greer and points beyond. That is the midpoint. It is the geographic midpoint between Wade Hampton and Subur Road. And what Circle K will tell you is that, I mean, they don't just make these, they don't make these decisions very lightly. They have algorithms that I can't fathom as to why it's a convenience store site. And if 34,000 vehicles a day that's on Highway 14 right now, no matter what we've heard on, put on that plot of land, and that, that's not going away. And if you can't have a convenience store with 34,000 vehicles per day and a lighted corner and four ingress egress points to said retail parcels, because there's another one being added on 14 by the developer, it's just not there yet. It's also bonded. And two D cell lanes, then you're just saying you'll never have a convenience store anywhere, quite frankly. I guess lastly, if you want me to make my case, that someone said it's not pedestrian-friendly. Greer, if nothing else, nobody can say they have not been adamant about being pedestrian-friendly and sidewalks to everywhere, correct? Connected or unconnected. The developer had to build sidewalks that are connected all the way down Subur Road and all the way down Southern Farms. So, you know, if it's not convenient to go get bread and milk and a six-pack of beer up, up the sidewalk rather than having to drive, again, I don't know what is.
All right, any further discussion? Any more questions for the developer? Staff? Staff's made a recommendation for denial. So, so there's no confusion. When we ask for, when I ask for a first and a second, a yea is to vote for the denial. A nay is to vote against the denial. The only reason I say that is because we had this issue come up several years ago. Some of us were on here, some of us weren't. And it took about three tries before we got it like we meant to have it because legally. So, do we have a motion?
Motion for denial.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second for denial. Okay.
Can I just clarify, is that denial of the major change or denial of staff's recommendation? So denial of staff's recommendation?
You're denying staff's recommendation?
No.
All right, so that's why I want us to not be confused.
The motion is regardless of staff's recommendation, right?
Yes.
Sure, I just wanted to clarify. So the request is a major change to the statement of intent. So you are recommending denial of the major change?
Motion, motion of denial to this change to the statement of intent.
Just making sure.
All right, so do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Second.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Serno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. Contact staff for next steps. And again, this is only a recommendation to city council. I'll tell the, the applicant and all of you folks here. Now, hold on, hold on before you get up and leave, okay? We are making a recommendation to city council. All right, so next week, when they meet, they can overturn our recommendation. Or they can go along with our recommendation. So if you want to come back next week, next Tuesday night in this room, unless something happens, God forbid, they'll be right here next week at 6:30. Same process, come through the front doors, come through the back doors, come through this door over here to get into this room. Officer Gally will be here, I'm assuming, to greet you. And please come and be as cordial as you were tonight for those folks next week. We still have more business before us. I'm going to give you two minutes if you want to leave or you want to stay. Okay, all right, let's continue on. We'll be closing the new business portion for, I've lost my place now. FDP 23-06. We will now open the new business for RZ 23-04.
The address for this item is 211 Arlington Road. And the request is to rezone to DRD Design Review District. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use map. Here is a photo of the existing conditions. Here is the preliminary site plan. And here is the proposed statement of intent. Here is the image of the proposed project and the elevation of the rental unit. When considering the requested DRD zoning, staff should determine the following, that the spirit of the zoning district will not be violated, that the proposed development will harmonize with existing developments, and that no environmental impacts will be created by the proposed development, and so forth. Once again, the request is to rezone to DRD Design Review District. It, the zoning to the north is RM1 multi-family residential. To the east and south is C2 commercial. To the west is RM1 multi-family residential. Staff recommends approval.
All right, can we have the applicant back up here at the podium, please? All right, fellows, what else would you like us to know? You gave us a lot before, so.
Well, there was a gentleman who just left. He said he liked my project, so.
Yeah, good, good for him. So the main house that's there now, will they have to bring that up to code? And bring it, since they're going to use it for commercial use, put a sprinkler system in and all that good stuff?
I'm not certain if it would need sprinkled. If they are opening certain areas for assembly, then yes, certain areas of the house will have to be brought up to code. It's not required that they open it to the residents. They can serve breakfast in common areas or courtyards. But if, yes, if they are going to have certain, open to the public or dining room, it has to meet assembly.
Right.
I, I can answer that question. The, the, the intent of the primary unit is strictly for the innkeeper itself on there. There's not going to be rental units inside. So it was strictly in the innkeeper's domain, so to speak. Now, under the state rule, I believe, under the, they allow, bed and breakfasts is at the exception as far as like kitchens and commercial equipment and stuff like that. But it's mostly just small stuff like coffee and pastries, local venue type stuff.
So you're not going to be doing any cooking inside of this building for the people that are staying on the property?
Under, under state regulation, no, that's not the intent, but under state regulation, actually, you can, but you can't refrigerate it or store it like a, like a restaurant facility. You could cook breakfast, you know, just like a family breakfast, or like an Italian family or Greek family. And you could serve it to your, your guests that morning or afternoon. You can do that without a special commercial license.
So what would the one unit, one-story units contain?
I'm sorry?
What would the one-story units contain?
Well, the, the one-story units are, are one bedroom, one bath, full kitchen, half kitchens. I think you have, might have some interiors, I think I, yep, the interior shots. I'm not sure if you have an interior of some of the existing ones I have, but they're very, they're very modern, high ceilings, high windows. But I, you know, I could always provide the interior shots of the ones we actually built in Traveler's Rest. And they're, they're very nice. And they're about 480 square foot, full kitchen, half kitchen, very updated, washer dryer, you know, ceiling, recessed ceiling lights. They're just very nice, comfortable, open, open decks, big decks. And in mostly is geared for more social activities. Like I said, we'll have like a giant Jenga set, a bocce ball court, water features. I, I think staff's familiar with some of the stuff I've done. You know, I've done waterfall systems on multimillion-dollar homes, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay, so this is not long-term rental, this is short-term rental?
Short-term, strictly short-term. This is not designed, monetarily wise, it doesn't work. For the money we're putting into- For the money we're putting into it, it does not work for long-term.
Any reason why there's no parking provided in front of the little, the buildings, the B and Bs?
The existing building?
No, the buildings that you're going to put on the property.
The B and Bs. No, I want the one, don't park in front of them.
No, we don't put the, I think it's just a cluster parking area.
Right, and this, you know, you have a cluster parking area over here, no houses that you'd be...
Right, right, we don't, because of the common area, we want a park setting, we don't want parking, just like a...
Walk in the rain either.
No, we, just like a city park, we don't want, like, when you design your city park, you don't want cars parked in the city park in the middle. We'd want it designed where people, they're guests, they come in here to park in the driveway, they have sidewalks, they go and they're greeted into the main lobby or the innkeeper's place, and they walk down nice paths, lighted paths, cross water features, et cetera, et cetera, into the unit.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not long-term, these are strictly short-term. Am I answering that question, I think?
You answered it.
Okay.
I mean, I necessarily like it.
You're thinking like long weekend type stuff, I mean...
Yeah, these are, for guests, they're coming in for the weekend, long weekends.
Vacation.
Yeah, vacation type, you know, Airbnb, home away type. And most of these are geared, it's not like a hotel, it's not, I want to say a cold establishment, it's more of a welcoming, welcome to our neighborhood, welcome to the city of Greer type feel, is what we want. We want the people to come in there, be very relaxed, you know, be chilled out.
So each one of these units, since it's going to be used for, does that fall under commercial use, since they're going to each have a kitchen and all that, or is this...
I don't believe so. We had an extensive meeting with the building department during planning advisory committee. We had a separate one-off where they went over all the requirements. I believe the individual units would be residential building code, and then the innkeepers, any of that occupancy space would have to meet commercial.
So the...
But the individual units...
They didn't have to be sprinkled?
No.
And our fire marshal and fire chief were okay with that?
They did review it through planning advisory committee, I don't remember that being any concern comment-wise. They did comment that based on the roads, that they had access to all units, fire truck wise, like the distance, so they felt comfortable with it, with the design.
Yeah, I believe it's a 150-foot hose distance, I think is the requirement. Because I have a development I'm doing in the city of Greenville now as a nine-unit, and two of the units we have to sprinkle, now these are long-term, single-family, but we have to sprinkle two of the units because it's outside the 150-foot hose length.
About lighting?
Yeah, lighting will, I guess by your guidelines, but we'll present a pretty detailed lighting landscape. It's more hardscape development, professional lighting, path lighting.
If approved, we would provide full photometrics and a lighting plan at the time of permitting, which would ensure no light trespass, and like I said, full cutoff fixtures.
For each of the units, how many occupants would you allow in each unit at one time?
Most likely, by our past experience, these are young couples that come in there, I'd say 90% of the Airbnbs that we have are young couples that come in, okay? Sometimes you get some working-class professionals that come in, they want it for like a week or two weeks because they're here for business, et cetera, et cetera. But that's usually the norm. Now, sometimes you'll have with kids, we might provide a couple of units with like a pull-out couch, you know, for the little ones, the wee ones, so to speak, if that's appropriate term. So I would say mostly young couples, people with kids, it could be, now it could be elderly also with grandkids, we have seen that quite a bit also. The majority, that's pretty much the market.
All right, any further questions for the applicant or for staff?
Yeah, and also just a general comment, from our, again, our experience doing stuff right downtown, Traveler's Rest, walking, everything's walking distance. I guess our conceptual is, as long as we could walk to the coffee shop, it works great. And you guys, that project is just on the cusp of that. I think it was like a 10-minute walk, five-minute bicycle ride. But the one question I want to ask, though, which I don't think I asked before, is that we were thinking about actually having and providing golf carts possible, but I'm not sure if those are allowed in your city or not.
They are, they have to be...
I think the state restrictions on the roads, you can go on.
Permitted, they have to be lighted. I don't know about, because that would be considered commercial use, wouldn't it?
For what?
If they bring golf carts and provide golf carts for their tenants or for their guests, that would be a commercial use, not a private residential use.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would violate state rules. We do not have any city of Greer specific ordinances, so it would follow...
Yeah, I guess every township's a little different. The city of Greenville and also, I believe Traveler's Rest allow residence, residential use of golf carts now. Where you could, because you're right around the corner, you could ride on down.
But you're saying you would provide them for your guests?
Yeah, as an option, otherwise we would have one or two, you know, some people, not everybody could ride a bike or whatever it is, and it'd be more convenient, and also if you have someone that's handicapped or elderly that can't make the walk or something like that. So some type of transportation would be nice to allow them to...
And this is within the range of our golf carts, that, I mean, they could call and ask for one of the city golf carts to come pick them up.
The shuttle system?
The shuttle system, yes.
All right, that's a good idea.
I'm not certain how far they do on call, but I wouldn't say it's out of the realm of possibility for the future.
Okay.
We're still evolving, we're still evolving.
Yeah. Okay, again, I will ask, do we have any further questions for staff or the applicant? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, let's vote.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Serno?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes. All right, gentlemen, we apologize for the long meeting.
Did we get dinner after?
Yes, you can take us to dinner afterwards. Thank you, contact staff for next steps, and good luck with your project. It'll be nice to see something down there and get that house back to its original beauty.
Turns out looking anywhere like that is going to be nice. Change that whole...
Okay, that will conclude the new business portion of the meeting. Do we have any other business, planning and zoning staff report? Gentlemen, if you will, take your conversation out into the lobby.
I don't have anything in particular, I was going to welcome Mr. Booker, but we already did that, so...
Has Mr. Booker done his training yet?
He has not, no. He's on the hook for six hours.
How many hours, six hours? Get that done before December, because it'll be here in five months. Anything else for the good of the club?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion for dismissal?
We'll dismiss.
We are dismissed.